Good evening. The meeting is called to order. Our first item is the approval of the minutes of January 31st. May I have a motion for approval, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. May all in favor please say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the motion carries. Thank you. Please note that there is a revised policy agenda with new items seventeen through twenty. I will now call on Vice Chancellor Ginger Waters to introduce item B1, a naming at Bronx Community College.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you know, Dr. Carolyn G. Williams has indicated her desire to retire from the presidency of Bronx Community College at the end of this academic year. In recognition and appreciation for her fifteen years of service and the extraordinary and transformational advancements that have been made to Bronx Community College under her leadership, the Chancellor is recommending that the board approve the naming of the Carolyn G. Williams Reading Room in the library of the new North Instructional Building at Bronx Community College, which will be open in the fall of 2012.
Thank you. And as Chair, I'd like to take a point of order and privilege. I got introduced to the City University through Carolyn Williams, so you can either blame her or bless her, depending upon that, but...
It would only be a blame if it involved me.
And so, I want to take a personal opportunity to say thank you, President Williams. It has been my extreme pleasure to have known you these past many years. And I should shut up and let them pass the resolution, but I want to tell you that it has been an honor to know you as a colleague, as a friend, and as a sister-girl, as they would say. So, thank you very much. So, with that, I'd like to have a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second? It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, the motion carries. Thank you and congratulations, Carol, Dr. Williamson. Would you like to address the body?
Thank you very much. I'm truly and very, very honored to have this room named after me. I had the opportunity to walk through the building about a week ago, and I have to tell you, it is such a beautiful building, and it is so pitting for our campus, and our students are so deserving. And to have that space named after me is indeed a great, great honor, and I thank you very, very much. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move to the policy calendar, which we have already voted on, the first item. Executive Vice President and Provost Lexa Loe will present the next group of items, the appointments of six distinguished professors. Five. Five distinguished professors.
Okay. The first one is Paul Adewell, who has served as a member of the CUNY doctoral faculty since nineteen ninety. He's a nationally and internationally recognized scholar in sociology of education, who's highly regarded for his work on inequality and stratification and on the social impact of information technology. He's a prolific author. The book that he co-authored with Professor David Levin, Passing the Torch to Higher Education for the Disadvantaged Pay Off Across the Generations, which was published by Russell Sage Press in two thousand and seven, received two of the most prestigious awards in its field, recognition from the American Educational Research Association as Outstanding Book of the Year, and the University of Louisville's Grau and Meyer Award in Education. Professor Adewell's research has attracted prodigious funding from the Gates Foundation, the Mellon Foundation, and the National Science Foundation, as well as others.
Thank you.
Okay, the next, check you going?
Yes, please.
The next one is Professor Godfrey Smith, Peter Godfrey Smith, who comes to CUNY from Harvard University's Department of Philosophy. He's an internationally renowned scholar in the philosophy of biology and the philosophy of the mind. His primary research interests in biology, including evolution, behavioral biology, and ecology, and pragmatism and epistemology. Professor Godfrey Smith has written three books to date. The most recent is Darwinian Populations and Natural Selection, published by Oxford in two thousand and nine, for which he won the Lakapos Award, the most prestigious prize in the philosophy of science. The next one is Professor David Sorkin, who comes to CUNY from the University of Wisconsin-Madison, where he's the Francis and Lawrence Weinstein Professor of Jewish Studies and Professor of History. He is recognized as a renowned scholar of modern Jewish history, and he's also an eminent European intellectual historian. Professor Sorkin has published four books to date, including most recently, The Religious Enlightenment: Protestants, Jews, and Catholics from London to Vienna, published by Princeton University Press in two thousand and eight. Among the many honors that he's received are a John Simon Buchenheimer Memorial Foundation Fellowship, a National Endowment for Humanity Fellowship for University Teachers, and a National Jewish Book Award for Scholarship. The next one is Dr. Peter Kwong, who has been at Hunter College since nineteen ninety-three. He plays a leading role in several social science disciplines. He is a major figure in the emerging discipline of Asian-American studies. He's a prolific scholar. He's co-authored or co-authored no fewer than five books. He's received particular recognition for Chinese America, The Untold Story of America's Oldest New Community, co-authored with Dusankov Mitskovich, published by New Press in two thousand and five, and Forbidden Workers: Chinese Illegal Immigrants and American Labor, published by New Press in nineteen ninety-eight. His record also includes many film credits, including co-production of China's unnatural disaster, Tears of Sichuan Province, which was an HBO documentary that was nominated for the two thousand and ten Academy Award. These are amazing, aren't they?
Yeah, phenomenal.
Okay. And the last one is Dr. V. Parameswaran Naier, who has worked at City College since nineteen ninety-three. He's a recipient of grant support from the National Science Foundation since nineteen ninety-three, which is absolutely, that is amazing, to have continuous grant support from Minnesota that long. Professor Naier has achieved an exceptional high level of success and prominence for his theoretical work in high-energy physics, with forays into mathematical physics. His most recent work is related to the Casimir Effect. He's published one hundred and twenty-five research articles, twenty of them in the last five years. His research support from federal agencies continues to impress at a time when it has become extremely difficult to obtain support for theoretical research in high-energy physics. Beyond all of this, Professor Naier is known within the CUNY community for his exemplary commitment to his department, which he served as Chair in a distinguished fashion.
Thank you. I'd like to move those five and just say it will be an honor to have them join along with our most distinguished professor Alexandra Loe, who is today, just demonstrated her brilliance, and so I want to thank you on behalf of this committee and all of us. So, having these additional people join you today is my pleasure and honor, and so I move for the motion to approve these five distinguished professors.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second? It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the motion carries. Thank you very much, and thank you, Dr. Loe. I will now call on Dr. Jeffrey Peck, Dean of the Wiseman School of Arts and Sciences, to introduce item 1B7, a named chair at Baruch College.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'm Jeffrey Peck, Dean of the Wiseman School of Arts and Sciences at Baruch College. I'm here today to seek approval of the first endowed chair in the Wiseman School of Arts and Sciences, named the Valentin Duzany Padigay Chair in Black and Hispanic Studies, and it will be in the Department of Black and Hispanic Studies at the Wiseman School. The donor is Hedda Feig, who is the wife of Charles Feig, who's a Baruch alumnus, and a founding member of the Baruch College Fund. Mr. and Mrs. Feig have created a number of important programs at Baruch College, a Feig Seminar, a Verda Chase Freshman Seminar, in honor of former dean of the Wiseman School, and the Paula Greg Feig Lecture Series in Latin American Studies. She herself teaches as an adjunct lecturer in the department. She has pledged to endowed a chair with the two-point-five million, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, in terms of the endowment, and I seek approval of that being chaired.
Thank you. May I have a motion for approval? So moved. Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the motion carries. Thank you very much. Gail Scobal, Special Counsel to the President, join us to present items 1B8 on behalf of Hunter College.
Thank you. I have the privilege of presenting five naming resolutions today. Three of them are in connection with our library renovation project, and one of them is a match to a student object, which was very exciting for us. So, the five namings brought a total of literally a million and a half in donations.
And you may present all five of them at the same time. Thank you. You can just read them.
The Dorothy Fryderm Halliotta Suite at Hunter College, the Barbara Lang Study Commons at Hunter College, the Sidney Miller Student Lounge at Hunter College, the Terrence Wall Gilder Information Commons at Hunter College, and finally, the Thomas Hunter Professor at Hunter College.
Thank you. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second? It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, the motion carries. Thank you very much. Jeremy Travis here? Jeremy, I saw her in the other room. President Travis, he left? Okay, you'll come on his behalf. Please introduce yourself and the resolution.
I'm Jane Bowers, Provost of John Jay College. This is a resolution to amend the college charter, and the amendment is on page five of the attachment to the resolution, and it's the part that's underlined in section nine, part E, is to add the phrase, "It shall, in this committee and faculty personnel, it shall also receive from departmental personnel and budget committees recommendations for promotions and reappointments, whether without tenure, together with compensation, et cetera, et cetera." The purpose of this resolution is to amend our charter. This will memorialize our longstanding procedure for promotion of a faculty member to full professor. The proposed amendment was adopted by our faculty senate on December tenth, was recommended by our college president, and under the amendment, the department personnel and budget committees will be empowered to vote on the merits of promotion to full professor of candidates in their departments. The results of these committee votes will be forwarded to the review committees of the college faculty personnel committee and to the full membership of the faculty personnel committee. Now, without this amendment, John Jay would be bound to follow a different practice, which is in the bylaws of the university, but we are allowed to deviate from that practice if it is so specified in our college charter. And so, we are making this change, in other words, to follow our longstanding practice and not be in violation of university bylaws.
Thank you. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second? Any questions? There being none, all in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the motion carries. Thank you very much. I would like to ask Provost William Chiamontano to come forward, and thank you for having me at your wonderful graduation. That was my first time being at Brooklyn College graduation. It was a pleasure.
It was a pleasure to have you. These are the amendments to the governance plan of Brooklyn College, attachment IB14. An earlier draft of this revised governance plan was distributed with the FSA Agenda Items. However, it did not contain all of our requested modifications. The draft that you have on the table right now is the most current one and contains all of our requested revisions, which I should say are part of the longer-term academic structure that we are doing right now at Brooklyn College. We have approved amendments to three articles, and these articles were approved by the Brooklyn College Policy Council, which is the governing body of the college. In Article One, the Policy Council provides the president with more discretion to appoint representatives from the administration to the Policy Council, and also provides for the selection of alternates for each constituency, the administration, faculty, and students, discerned with voice and vote at any of our meetings in the absence of their respective members. This was passed by our Policy Council on March tenth. Article number four, the Council of Administrative Policy, to modify the composition of the Liaison Committee of Count, which currently was comprised of three individuals, now consists of five individuals, five chairs went from each of the new five schools at Brooklyn College. That was also approved by our Policy Council on April seventh. Our Committee on Promotion and Tendre to accommodate the new five-school structure and to provide for the role of the school deans in place of the provost. That was also put forward to our Policy Council and passed on March tenth. And finally, once again, with our Committee on Promotion and Tendre, to leave in a sentence that is now irrelevant on the five, with the new five-school structure, since we no longer have divisions. That was passed on five-eleven by our Policy Council.
Thank you. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, questions?
The Council currently on the Policy Council is divided...
Policy Council currently is divided in thirds, one-third students, one-third faculty, one-third administration, as long as they are equal in number. Currently, it's a twenty-seven-person body, which is a little unreal, the nine-nine-and-nine. As long as we maintain the equal representation, we'll make it probably smaller, six-six-six or something of that nature.
Any other questions?
Just that this new structure, Madam Chairwoman, is very strongly supported by the Chancellor. When Karen Gould was in the process of being hired, we really asked her to think about reorganizing Brooklyn College from the way it was situated at the time, where how many department chairs reported to the provost?
I had thirty-three department chairs.
Thirty-three, and so I compliment the president, and you're doing just the right thing.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the motion carries. Thank you very much. Are you doing the other one as well? She's doing the other one too. Continue.
The next is the naming of Madeline Leventhal Rand, Brooklyn College class of sixty-four, Chair in Literature, attachment IB15. Madeline Rand is a nineteen sixty-four alumna of Brooklyn College, a longtime teacher in New York City and also an adjunct teacher at Brooklyn College. She was an active member of our board of the Brooklyn College Foundation and served as the Foundation Secretary. Madeline suffered for a long time with Lou Gehrig's disease, and she was taken from us just a few months ago. And in her memory, actually before she passed away, her husband Larry Rand established this chair in literature at Brooklyn College. We already have done a search and have a number of fine candidates for this position.
Thank you. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second, Madam Chair.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, the motion carries. Thank you very much. City College, we have a representative here from City College? Oh! I didn't see, I didn't mean to say, I didn't see you back.
Thank you. This is about the naming of the J. Max Bond Architectural Center. J. Max Bond Jr., a partner of Davis Berbey and Bond, was one of the most influential African-American architects both in New York City and the United States. He was also a much beloved professor and dean of architecture at City College. He was also a role model for minority architects and a voice of conscience within his profession. City College Architectural Center is a community design center or a clinic affiliated with the Bernard and Anne Spitzer School of Architecture that offers technical assistance and advocacy in planning and design for public and not-for-profit community-based organizations, and it concerns both physical and economic development in the neighborhoods. It provides a home for research on issues affecting urban environment and a forum for engaging the neighborhood community about design, public policy, and finance. It's therefore a privilege to recommend that this center be named after one of the greatest individuals.
Absolutely. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second?
Just a quick, I thought that at the board meeting, at the board meeting, didn't we approve this before? Is this just a naming?
This is just a naming.
Just a naming? It was a creation before, just clarifying.
This is the naming.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, it's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the motion carries. Thank you very much.
Because I remember moving it at the board meeting.
You're trying to have a deja vu.
Groundhog there, yeah.
What you're recalling is the search that we're doing for that position, and that's what you recalled. And Trustee Shorter is on the committee to look for the person.
Thank you.
President Mysken?
Welcome.
Thank you. I was asked to be very brief, like I can be. We have four names here, you'll see. Two are professorships and two are scholarship funds. The first one is Carolyn Gordon Barnes Scholarship Fund. He's a former chair of the Cuny College Foundation, and he generously sponsored the college, and he was very helpful in providing support for students who are living in residence halls that were studied down here with him and his wife. The last one is a wonderful one-time fund and scholarship fund for students in music, which we were very happy to receive. And then we have two professorships, one in poverty and abluance, and another one in our speech pathology programs. Those are one major each. So, asked, are they approved over?
Thank you very much. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the motion carries. Thank you very much.
Nicely done, Jim.
And now, we'll move to the Chancellor's report. President Lisa, you're back. Introduce the appointment of a senior vice president and provost. How wonderful.
Thank you. It is truly a pleasure for me and a privilege for me to present Martin Moskovitz, most recently professor of physical chemistry at UC Santa Barbara, as the new provost at City College. He brings an international reputation and more than thirty years of experience in both research and teaching and administration, which will be a wonderful asset to the college. He also, not only is a physical chemist, he's been the chief technology officer at API Nanotronics Corporation. He's been a co-founder and the patent holder of Spectra Fluidics, a Santa Barbara nanotechnology company that detects trace amount of chemicals and airborne chemicals, which to me is wonderful for City College and for CUNY in terms of its entrepreneurship, experience, and the work in trying to forge new partnerships. He also absolutely loves the liberal arts, so you've got the best of both worlds, so it's my privilege to do that.
Thank you. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second? It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Abstentions? I said disapproval. Opposed. I'm starting to think of the word because it's not even relevant. Disapproval and... Approval and oppose. Approval and oppose, and abstentions. They're being named, the motion carries. Thank you very much.
And Dr. Moskovitz is here.
Dr. Moskovitz, would you like to come forward? Thank you very much, and welcome to the City University of New York.
Well, what can I say? I'm excited and honored. This is a great privilege to be in a dynamic place like the City University of New York, and especially its flagship campus, the City College. I look forward to many such meetings, and I especially look forward to working with and supporting the ambitious program and vision of the president's.
Thank you, and welcome. Dr. Keith? Appointment of a new acting vice president and chief operating officer.
Yes. Believe me, everyone, it's my delight to ask you to support Ron Thomas to serve as interim vice president for administrative affairs. Ron has been a part of the two family in New York for over twenty years, most recently serving as a dean for administrative affairs on the Jericho Postman, who, as many of you know, left us to go to his alma mater, CNY, on April eleventh. Ron stepped in right away, and should you approve him today, you will now have the title to go with it, and he's served for twenty years in increasingly responsible positions. He's been the director of VOC, he's been a don to the team yet, he's been an institute of fascinating as well, and he's handled many areas, including budget development and implementation, strategic planning, business operations, capital facilities, fundraising, and the like. Ron has a BA in economics from Fordham and an ambassador in economics from U of S, who I ask you to support.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second? It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the motion carries. Is Ron here with us? Oh, I can't see him. Welcome to your next role at the university, and thank you for being a true CUNY scholar and a member of the team.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Happy to take on this great task, this new role to challenge the bar college, the performance of the opportunity of working with my colleagues many, probably, twice in time, as well as the members of the Chancellor, dealing with some rather challenging issues, which I am sure we will get through.
Thank you, and welcome.
Thank you very much.
President Morales, would you come forward?
Madam Chair, it's a pleasure for me to ask the board to consider Mr. Ira Persky as acting vice president for finance and administration at the College of Staten Island. Mr. Persky brings over forty years of experience in higher education, the last eighteen years as the executive director of the colleges of Staten Island's Exenary Services Corporation. He's been a principal leader in our residential life project. He brings, throughout his career, Mr. Persky has had oversight responsibility for budget, fiscal management, strategic operations, planning, facilities management, and human resource management.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second? It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the motion carries. Is he with us today? Welcome to your enhanced position and role at Staten Island. Thank you for agreeing to serve.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's certainly an exciting opportunity to do. I'm very pleased that President Morales has the confidence to offer me this position, and it is trying times for the university, and I certainly hope to be able to work with all of you to help solve some of those.
Thank you very much. You're a joyous guest. Hostess Community College is next. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Welcome. And it gives me great pleasure to introduce for your consideration, Nathaniel Cruz as our vice president for student development and enrollment management. After a national search, sometimes it's good to know that a face like the leader right there on your campus. BP Cruz joined us in nineteen eighty-three as a financial aid advisor and an English tutor, and he has also, in every capacity you can imagine, in financial aid admissions, counseling, assistant dean of students, dean of students, and interim vice president for student development. Twice a CUNY graduate, there is no better advocate for the loss of students than BP Cruz. I'd like to make him for consideration before the board.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second? It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, the motion carries. Thank you very much, and welcome to come and join us, and thank you very much for continuing to serve the university.
Well, thank you, thank you, Chancellor, senior chancellor, vice chancellor, and vice chancellors, presidents, members of the board, and I want to thank my president and Hostess Community College, as well as my friends who are here to support me, and those who couldn't make it here to support me. And I want to express my gratitude for giving me this opportunity to serve... And I want to express my gratitude for giving me this opportunity to serve as one of your Templar Knights of the university, in the Austin safe passage to the Free Academy. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is Kenneth Norris?
Yes, right there.
Let's have Kenneth for you. Present two faculty appointments with waivers in the bylaws.
There are two faculty appointments that require committee's approval. They are as follows. Item one, C five, appointment of Dr. Nancy Lasquez Torres as assistant professor with tenure in the secret department at John Jay College of Terminal Justice effective March fourteenth, two thousand and eleven, with waiver of previous tenure requirement in section six point two point C of the bylaws. Also, one, C six, appointment of Dr. Maria M. Canelli as professor with tenure at Brooklyn College with waiver of the one-year service requirement in section six two D two of the bylaws effective August twenty-fifth, two thousand and eleven. These personnel actions were voted on affirmatively by the campuses' community committees and are recommended by the college presidents. Both the offices of academic affairs and human resource management have reviewed and approved them. Madam Chair, I present these items for the committee's consideration.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second. It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, the motion carries. Thank you very much. Section two lists faculty appointments with immediate tenure and reappointments of faculty with early tenure pursuant to the bylaws. These items appear on the agenda for information purposes only and do not require a report or a vote by the committee. We will have the Vice Chancellor Waters report, but I just wanted to say, while I generally talk fast and get through meetings quickly, you notice that this has been a rather expedited process, even for me. But I wanted to say, because we, we do have a very important meeting with the students that have to be held in the next meeting, and so we wanted to get through that, and for that reason, I've asked Vice Chancellor Waters to abbreviate her report, which, because I don't want anyone to believe that a report on diversity deserves to be gone through in an expedited and shortened manner. So she will be giving a very brief report. We have been meeting over the last several weeks. I'm very proud of her work and the work of her staff, and so that we're not short-changed, I've asked her just to give you an oversight, and we will have a more appropriate meeting and discussion on diversity at the university in the fall. Vice Chancellor Waters?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I give my abbreviated report on diversity, I do want to mention that there were six appointments below the level of vice president that will appear on the Chancellor's university report in the ECP. One at BMCC, one each at BMCC, CSI, Hunter, Lehman, Mega Rivers, and Queensborough Community College. If there are any questions about those, I will certainly answer them. There also were thirteen search waivers that were granted and will appear on the Chancellor's university report. One at CSI, seven in the School of Professional Studies, and I must mention that those positions are all ones that were grant-funded and are now moving on to the tax levy side of the house, and one each at Hostos, Hunter, Lehman, and there were two at the central office. On the diversity front, I do want to just give you a quick update. We are still in the middle of doing our diversity study. We are looking at an assessment of diversity activities over the past ten years. We are doing a climate survey to determine attitudes and perceptions about diversity and inclusion in the university, and we are looking to identify effective practices within CUNY and at peer institutions. While the work is not yet completed, and we do expect it to be completed by the end of the summer, I did want to mention some of the themes that are emerging from our work thus far. For one, we think there is a need for a change in focus from affirmative action, from an affirmative action model, to a focus on developing a deeper and broader understanding of the academic case for diversity and inclusion, and we will be exploring this further. Another theme is that the university should consider establishing a university diversity council to oversee strategy, create synergy among the CUNY institutions, share best practices, and coordinate strategy. This body would have a broad charge and a high level of participation, and again, we will be delving into that as we learn more. Another emerging theme is that strong mentoring programs for junior faculty need to be established at every institution, and this is particularly important for underrepresented faculty, including women. Some colleges have these programs now, but others do not, and research shows that mentoring helps to retain underrepresented faculty. One other theme that's becoming apparent is that the campuses need to develop their own strategic diversity plans that are tailored to their institutions. It is very difficult to do this from a central perspective, because there are so many specific situations that are on each campus. And one last theme, leadership matters. Presidents and provosts who make increasing faculty diversity a priority get results, and we want to look further at that as well. The next steps, we will be soliciting feedback on emerging themes from CUNY provosts and deans. Those meetings have already been set up. We will be interviewing key players who have implemented effective practices at peer institutions. We will be looking again at our internal data to see exactly where we are, and we expect to have a report to the Chancellor by August first of this year. So that's the work that we have been doing so far, and I just wanted to give you a highlighted version of where we're going with this.
And let me just add, having done the preliminary review of the report, my comment to President, I mean Vice Chancellor Waters, and she is working on it, is that I'm not a mathematician, but it looked like if you do the, the distribution of diversity, the higher you get, the less it becomes diverse. And so, I've asked her to look not only at the faculty diversity, but to look at the VP level and above diversity, so that we make sure that we're leading by example, and so she is looking at that as well. So, I'm going to take this opportunity to welcome a very special student in my tenure here, and that's Dwight Peters, who is a graduate, a proud graduate of BCC, and I, one of our outstanding student leaders, and I look forward to continued work and your growth at this university. Thank you. With that, may I have?
He just graduated.
He just graduated. And, but he's still continuing on his academic journey. That was just one step in that academic journey, so he's a, go back to the one. Yes.
I have a question if I can on the report.
Yeah.
You mentioned that you'll be getting feedback from the CUNY faculty, so I'm wondering if that feedback will defer into the line staff and associate assistant professors. I think it's important to get not just sort of the, the typical leadership of the folks that are looking to.
Actually, what happened, we reversed it. We actually started with talking with faculty who are all, so there have already been focus groups, and there have been strategy sessions that faculty have been invited to. We actually had groups set up by identity, so that people who had different identities would give their own perspective of diversity. So we actually started at the ground level, but in doing that, realized that the leadership aspect of this needed to be pursued a little bit more, and that's why the meetings with the deans and the provosts have now been set up.
And if you haven't been interviewed, we will.
I have.
Okay, okay, that's wonderful. Are there any?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes.
Yeah, I was wondering how you selected the faculty focus groups that you.
We put, we asked the campuses to identify people and to reach out to people, and they volunteered to sit in on focus groups. In some cases, there were certain individuals who were particularly interested and made that known to us, and we certainly invited them, but there was an, and a call that was made, and it was primarily handled by the affirmative action officers on the campus.
Okay, I was going to ask who of campus in particular. So, the.
Thank you. So we look forward to more in-depth conversations in the fall. Are there any more questions, comments? If there being none, may I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second. Moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Not bad.
Abstentions, I did. Whoa, 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 whoa.